Welcome you all and would ask if you could join us in the pledge of allegiance and then following the pledge of allegiance if you could remain standing and Councilman Mike Thompson will lead us in invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow out and pray. Holy God, we humbly ask for your presence with us and your blessing upon us tonight as we conduct business on behalf of our citizens. Give us open hearts, open minds, give us wisdom and insight as we make decisions that affect the whole population for the better good. Thank you for the privilege of serving the people of Bonner Springs and may we never take that privilege and freedom for granted. Christ, amen, I pray. Amen.
Moving right along, our first item on tonight's agenda is items from citizens here in the audience tonight, concerns that you may have about items not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. With no immediate action taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government, all issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on our future agenda. Is there anyone that'd like to stand and address the city council this evening? I'm sorry. You okay? I'm sorry. Yes, I would like one, thank you. I'm sorry.
Water here.
I didn't mean to start with you.
It'll take two.
You are a friend of the crown.
Sorry for our informality, but anyone like to stand and address the city council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda item, our consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the January 8th meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, appointments to boards and commissions, and public use request for Oak Street. Do I have anything to be pulled by the staff? Anything to be pulled by the citizens? Any questions, concerns, comments? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, for just a wee bit of discussion, I'd like to pull check number 135607.
Very good. Any anything else? Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none?
Oh, I had one question, I'm sorry. You asked me before I got to it. The Oak Street, closure of Oak Street, is that the same group that requested that for 2017?
Let's pull that for further discussion. We'll go ahead, pull item number six and that check as referenced and ask for a vote on the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion on the consent.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as introduced without item number six and check number to Mr. Reeves, that should be pulled.
I'll second that motion.
And seconded. It's like our first meeting this evening.
Yes.
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 Very good. On to the check number, sir.
Yeah, 135607, it's on that 1325, Johnson, Wanda County Council of Mayors. I'm not disputing the amount, the only thing I'm saying there is we were given an invitation to come bring a guest and then find out in the aftermath that, oh, I have to pay for my guest. And I said, oh, okay, well, you know, the amount of my guest attending, my wife, was more than I make a month here. And so I just thought that was a little bit high for what we've got out of it. I was going to support our mayor, our city, and my wife was coming to support me, unknowing to us at the time that she was, well, I was gonna have to pay for her $74. Okay, I was informed that we were given an email and I missed it, my fault, okay? I paid the money, but I just think that that's pretty steep for that and not knowing till the last minute. Had I known right up front, I wouldn't have scheduled that. So that's all I have to say on that because I already paid it.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the confusion or the lack of information. I was aware of that, but I was aware from years in the past, so I recognize that. Sorry for the confusion. Other questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion on that.
Make the motion, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the check.
Moved and seconded. Other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. On to number six, a request to use Oak Street. Well, since I read that.
Well, this is Saturday.
And who, I would entertain a motion or so we can have something to discuss, you pulled that?
You can make a motion to approve it, then vote no against it.
Or not approve.
I will make a motion to approve the public use request for small business Saturday, pending receipt of insurance certificate and required occupational license.
So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start right here.
I'm just wondering if that's the same group of people that applied last year?
It is not. Last year, it was the PFP applying for the closure. This year, it is one of the businesses that.
Is there any obligation on the part of the city to inform those differing groups of what they're, is it just first come, first served? I know there was a little bit of unease about that topic last year.
It is first come, first served. They ask the organization requesting a closure to notify the affected.
They did, okay. Okay, thank you.
Has there been any question from any of the businesses? Because I heard last year that there were a few that felt, you know, if you're a particular business and there was a vendor out there that was offering the same thing as your business, has there been any talk at all or any concern about that or is everybody pretty much in agreement that this could happen?
Yeah, this is the other side of the group that requested it last year. So the up to all the down to the mission, please, I don't know what we're going to do with it.
So they were concerned last year with vendors and their placement, so if they choose to close the street on that weekend and have vendors or the positions of the vendors will be something that you would think would be their direction. So is there a chance that they could have the use of the street and not close it?
If they decide to change it later. Right now, it's for closure of the 100 to 200 block of Oak Street.
Is that from front to Middleton or is that from Second Street to Third Street?
I believe it's just from the front to Third Street area.
The way it was written, from the 100 block to the 300 block, I didn't know if that was just the 200 block or if that was all inclusive of 100, 200, and 300 block.
The closure would end at the 300 block, so First Street, it would end at 100, but it includes that 100 block, so front to Third.
The 100 block and the 200 block. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Hurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes. On to item number seven, which is a public art policy. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Smith, Parks and Recreation Department. November 13th, 2017, Betsy Smith and I presented the arts policy to you at a workshop and I apologize, Betsy is at our state conference tonight in Wichita, so she won't get to be here. Going back, you had a couple of questions about some of the things in the art policy that may or may not be able to happen, and so we addressed those in the memo here. The first one being the difference between graffiti and art, and according to the city's building code, graffiti is the damage mutilation defacing in the exterior surface, and so that would be what your graffiti would come out to be, and it goes into more detail about it. And then the arts policy, we define art as an aesthetic enhancement of a building or landscape, painting, sculptures, engraving, murals, photography, and drawings. And a key component of that is owner approved. So it's not in there, but that's when art is, you know, with the consensus of the owner that, you know, consent of the owner that they're gonna make that done. So other than that, then it's vandalism and graffiti. The second thing was, do the building owners need to have a permit to be able to do art on the side of their building and/or permission? And no, they don't need to have permission if they are, if they are the property owners. We'd encourage them to work with us as to what they're gonna put on it, so it's, you know, consistent with the other type of art that we would have, murals in the city. Any questions about that one?
Is there a lot of demand? I mean, are they asking?
Not yet. I mean, there are a couple that have expressed interest in it, but nothing that's solid yet, they're all waiting on this to be approved. The third item was the definition or the difference between signage of, on the side of a building and what is art, and that is spelled out in the zoning ordinance 2443. When it talks about the sign is the main thing on it, it communicates information of any kind to the public, and it again goes into detail about the size, when the ordinance talks about the size of the sign can be, and that you gotta have a permit from the city for that. And also in ordinance 2358, about they are required on the premise, sign permits are required for those type of signs or paintings or drawings or whatever they, the way they try to put it up there, whether it's a metal blade or whatever you define as your sign. And also it talks, we talked about wall signs, that's defined in that ordinance, and it goes over, and it talks about again, the size can't be more than 15 inches from the base of the wall and some different requirements for that. And then obscenity was another concern, and that's addressed in the ordinance, sign ordinance 2358, that talks about the, excuse me here for a moment, that of prude, interest, excuse my.
Period. Period.
Which means sex and.
Think of purity as a current.
Yeah, yeah. That's the definition I found for it. So then it can't have, you know, the work has to, can't be offensive in any manner, and it has to, the work as a whole has to lack literary, artistic, political, or scientific value, or if it lacks those, then it's obscene. So, and so the whole point of this policy is to provide access to art in the public places, whether it be sculpture out in the median or in a place that we design in front of the buildings or downtown, or whether it's paintings that we display in the community center or at City Hall, you know, it just takes all various forms of art, and we wanna try to find a way to promote that within our community. One of the, I was on the high school's senior boards and one of the young men brought in a report and talked about how art, especially in individuals and students, that it promotes a higher thinking and more social interaction and is very beneficial to students and people and also gives them an outlet for, you know, to relieve their stress or anxiety and so anyway, it's beneficial in more ways than just looking at it and appreciating it.
Very good.
Any questions? So what I'm looking forward tonight is for you to approve the art policy.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any comments from the citizens concerning the art policy? Public art policy in the general governing body handbook? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve GV 18-1 public art policy.
Seconded. So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here with Councilman Shannon, Mr. Mackey.
None.
None.
On the section you're talking about on the Camilla versus California and the U.S. District Court, the obscenity, you know, that's very subjective. Who is the person who makes that decision on the subject of the?
Well, in the arts policy, I brought that along here, it states that the coordinator, the way it'll go is the coordinator bring it to me, the director, and then once we look at it, we'll submit it to the city manager for approval, and if there's any question, let me find the exact location for that one, if there is any question about the content of the art, it will be brought before the city council.
So staff, staff is initially is, are the ones who are making the decision? Okay.
Yes, sir. Well, it's not that final approval.
But it's fine, it's not unless somebody outside the city.
4.1B talks about the, we have to approve a lot of it.
Very good. Anything else? No? Some of those questions that we had, there is gray area on a lot of those and they'll have to be looked at, and the public, the public art policy in the governing body handbook would, has a lot of checks and balances, so I think, I really think we're using as much common sense as we can in having something that walks that thin line, because you, some of what we consider graffiti is also very artistic, so it's, those are things that were spelled out and you could have a piece of art that is, appears to be graffiti, but you couldn't necessarily have graffiti that is art, art in the city of Bonner Springs because it's, it's not approved by the owner of the property. Very good. Anything else? Seeing none, vote please.
Reeve?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to the city manager's report.
Just a quick note, a few different things. Going on the city website, we have started to put out tailored demographic, socioeconomic reports, parts of our economic development issues. So if you go into the city's website, you can either put in market data or you can go under city manager and then it's under economic development from there. But again, it just starts to give folks a better understanding of different tracts of money, socioeconomic or discretionary incomes, things like that, as well as median ages and home values, so again, helpful information for folks that are looking to either locate a business here in town or perhaps even move or develop a clearing account. Again, that's new information that we haven't had before. Also want to note, we are working with, the city staff are working with the Kansas Emergency Management, seeing as well of the unified government regarding the July disaster, it was declared a disaster by the president, still going through the season now, documenting or taking the documented items for administrative manpower to hopefully get some money back from the federal government's parts of the, we'll be hopeful to figure out where that stands in the next few months, and also just wanna bring up, I'm sure many of us are aware, we did have an incident, had a case in the bank this morning involving a robbery of a bank, police department is working currently with the FBI to figure out the situation. I would just hopefully ask if anybody has any information about that, contact the police department. We do have some information related to the suspect, you know, some pictures of that individual, so you can ask people online, whether it's out on the, the RDM, police department's Twitter page, Facebook, you know, so again, if you have any information, please share that with us. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll start with the city council items. We'll start down here, sir.
Yes, one item has come to my attention. I have heard, and I'm not sure myself, is the proposal of a water park where the police station used to be, is that in the budget for this year?
It's a line item for capital projects, Parks Department. In total, I think we had about $700,000 in capital items that were in the Park Department. I would say for that particular allocation, there has yet to be any traction on the state doing anything that was more of a falling in line with what our strategic plan had said, so we put that money into that as a placeholder for future discussions. So to answer your direct question, is there money there? Yes. Are we planning to probably spend that money in 2018? More than likely, no.
And that was kinda where I was going because I discovered some opposition to that, so I'm just informing this body of that, so we need to consider that as we go along. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. Sir?
I'm only mentioning it right now because you triggered my memory. I did go out on that market data, and I don't know if all the links are supposed to be functioning, but the links, when you look and see where unoccupied buildings or land, it just says it's retrieving data from the website and you never get a response back. That's it.
None.
I know that we are looking at the potential move of Dollar General to the Bonner Shops. Is, is there even a dream timeline on that?
Um, green timeline, I don't know, first quarter of this year, that was.
Oh, that's one.
I think they're actually, I don't mind. A lot of other things related to those types of activities are going to be included in my report under this community development, ongoing projects.
Got it?
I would look to that.
Is it there and I'm just missing it?
It isn't on there right now, but it's, it's gonna be moving forward, it'll be within that. I'm not sure about a strong timeline or anything, but there is progress.
And the existing tenants are hopefully staying? Do we, have you heard anything on that?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Very good. Nothing. Sir?
Bob, I also, excuse me, I had a couple of calls regarding that, that splash park, you know, that was, and I said that was something as a, something that's just kind of, I said, well, it's just that or build the Eiffel Tower or something, you know, lookout tower or something, you know, I said that's nothing that I was aware of, but I did receive a phone call too on that, so I thought I'd go on that. Nothing else other than that.
Very good.
Please.
Can you hear that? That's your chance.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sorry.
A growing pothole in Lakewood, about the 500 block, think it's getting larger, I think there's, I've seen a few others around town. Are we preparing to the winter?
Asphalt's closed?
Yeah, as we can, obviously, then there's some cover over the street, it takes a different way.
Asphalt plants are closed?
Yeah, we do this hot hatch.
That's fine, I just was more was interested in the situation. To watch it because it's getting larger.
That's what'll happen in the wintertime, is a lot of the cracks will start becoming larger and larger.
You guys take our pictures.
Yeah, this is a good opportunity to remind people that this is the growing season for potholes in Bonner Springs, so if some of those come to your knowledge, there's an opportunity for you to pass that information along on the city website, as well as you're welcome to call the city hall, pass that information along. The most dangerous of potholes are the ones they try and make less dangerous for cars falling in them, I mean, a wheel or something, not a natural park, but so that's the intent until the weather changes enough to remedy those. So yes, thank you, as well as it's also the time of water main breaks, and sometimes they're more difficult to recognize than others, so if you happen to see a water main break, please notify the city. They may already know, but it's worth an opportunity to make that phone call. The market data, that's great, and you might ask the city liaisons to the different community groups to make them knowledgeable of that and show them maybe a tutorial or something, especially the chamber and the downtown specialty retail merchants, they could benefit from knowing some of that step too, as well as any of the other commercial contacts we make with the different groups in the city. I have, we haven't had an opportunity for the new Wanda County CEO and mayor of Kansas City, Kansas, David Alvey, to come out to meet our city council and I, but we hope to have that opportunity in the future, but we're, I have, his office has scheduled a continuation of our meetings, monthly meetings with the Wanda County mayors, so we'll continue that, and those will start back up in February, so we'll have an opportunity to keep that avenue of communication open on a regular basis, and I'm encouraged by that. I would like, I know it was mentioned in here, but the governing body institute for the, from the league, I hope everyone can take an opportunity to consider being able to go to that. It has a wealth of information and would be very, I highly support your participation in that. It is, I do have one more piece of information. It is with a heavy heart, I have to announce the resignation of one of our council members. Council member Joe Peterson has resigned, effective as of the next council meeting, and you, sir, have been a wealth of information and a great public servant, and I appreciate all you've done for the city of Bonner Springs.
My goodness.
Thank you so much for your involvement, and certainly appreciate all you've done and wish I wasn't having to receive that resignation, but certainly I wish you nothing but the best for you and your family and as well as all your business pursuits, so we stand here very proud of your participation with us.
Thank you very much.
You've made us better for being a part of this group. Seeing however that is the case, I wanted to make sure to let everyone know, we'll be accepting applications for a council seat. This is a Ward Four council seat, so if you happen to know anyone for, from Ward Four in the city of Bonner Springs, if you could, if they were, are at all interested in serving on the city council through the. on the city council through the remainder of Joe's term, which is almost four years, I would appreciate it if they would fill out an application, a volunteer application with Amber, the city clerk, in the city clerk's office. I don't know if that form's online. It is online, but they can turn it in with Amber at this, here at the city hall. So, anyone in Ward Four, so I'm putting the word out specifically to our other Ward Four city councilmen.
The wheels are turning.
As anyone else. I'll receive those, I hope to receive those within the next two weeks, and then I'll, I've asked a, a collection of past mayors to assemble and to review those applications and forward a suggestion to me, which I'll bring to the city council, and you'll approve for that position to be filled. So, there's a, a process, first of which is that application, second of which is the, the former mayor's review, they'll bring forward their suggestions to me, and I'll bring my suggestion to the council for your approval. So, does anyone have any questions concerning that? That's a, the manner in which we, the manner in which previous vacant city council seats has been filled, that it's been over 10 years since that's had, had to happen, but that was the form it took last time, so.
It would've been me.
Yeah, how long ago was that?
Ten and a half years ago.
Ten and a half years ago, so.
Volunteer?
I was appointed.
Voluntold.
Voluntold, volunteer. Well, other than that unfortunate news, I stand for any questions for, anyone for me? Any questions? Seeing none, we're adjourned.